If everyone would, we have a guest here today who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you want to come forward? And what's your name, son?
Noah Redford.
What was that?
Noah Redford.
Okay, Noah Redford is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every human justice.
Noah, do you want to just turn around there? Do you want a picture?
Sure.
Put the council behind.
Good job, Noah. Yep, great job. Okay, first thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Does anyone, Mike, you want to have an addition?
Here, if you wouldn't mind, I have an addition that has occurred during Patty's absence here. Documents that came in as late as Friday to us relate Thursday. I'd like you to have, if you wouldn't mind, an agenda item 5.5, kind of just before the consent agenda. That would be titled "Bank Change Documents," with the First Bank and Trust as part of the merger with the State Bank of New Prague. And we'd have a securities custodial agreement, an ECH agreement, and a security procedure waiting.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone wants to add to the agenda or any questions or changes on the agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. There's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. First thing on the agenda, Ken, are you going to take this?
Yep. So as the council introduced at the last meeting, in November 6th, we had the first reading for the fence ordinance amendment. And then, as we had noted at the discussions in the planning commission meetings from July through October, including a public hearing at the planning commission meeting where we had no public comments received. Permit us on the statute, we did provide the 10-day notice requirements by posting the proposed ordinance on our bulletin board in City Hall hallway, as well as put on our website. We did not get any further comment from either of those postings, which occurred on November 7th, thereby fulfilling our 10-day notice requirement. So tonight, you are able to complete the adoption, so our second reading of the amending ordinance for the fence requirements. And again, to summarize, these fence ordinance amendments included a few different topics, additional clear zone from the edge of a trail or pathway that did not exist previously, which is two feet, and then a clear zone of five feet from any actual roadway surface. The setbacks from municipal electric boxes and utility boxes, as shown in the diagram, so that we do not have future circumstances in a power outage situation where utility crews cannot get to and open up the cabinets to restore power. Clarification in language, that the good part of the fence or the posts cannot face towards your neighbor. You have to keep that on the inside of your fence. We had that in there before, this clarifies it a little bit. Putting in a picture in the diagrams where we have a site triangle requirement that already had been in the ordinance, but wanted to add it specific for fences. On our example, fence drawing in the ordinance. And then finally, we have one final item under 3A, on the third page of the ordinance, where we had consistency in the language that was amended, that says fences can be located along a property line, rather than on the property line, just being consistent between the commercial and residential fence provisions. Again, those were the items that were included in the ordinance. So, do you have any further questions? Just to end with those.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Ken at this time? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion for the, approve the second reading.
Second.
I got a motion by Sean Ryan, seconded by Amy Jurk. Mike, do we need to do a roll call on this? Or, no, okay. So, there's no other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Thank you. Remember, Noah, we're not picking on this guy.
We know.
Good evening. I've got a couple of things for you tonight. The first one is an agreement for telecommunication services with Bevcom. If you remember, we've had $162,000 budgeted in the capital improvement plan to connect the lift stations with our SCADA system. We've looked at a lot of different options. The old typical way of doing it would be radio frequency. There's also cellphone service to do the communication back and forth, and then fiber optic. The fiber optic has constantly proven, and I think will continue to prove, to be the most reliable system. There's a few of these lift stations because the city's fiber goes by them, that we don't have to pay a service charge for them. There is four of them that we need to get fiber optic to the lift station from an existing system, and even still, the city's fiber system does not go anywhere near. Bevcom's is closest. So, it was decided after a lot of different debates and a lot of different angles of looking at it, that it makes sense for the near future to hire Bevcom to put in the fiber optic line. They're giving us a considerable good deal on it, as long as we sign a contract with them for three years to buy the service from them. After the three years, if and when the city's fiber goes by one of these lift stations, then we will get rid of that plan and hook onto the city's network and continue to serve those or get communication from those lift stations, or for those lift stations, I should say. So, staff recommends the council approve the agreement with Bevcom for the fiber installation into four lift stations, which would be a total of $9,100 for the four, a one-time fee, and the yearly cost of the internet service of $599.40 per lift station.
Go ahead, Mike.
For the benefit of the listening audience, Glenn, maybe you could digress a second to talk about why it is you're wanting to connect these nine lift stations ultimately up into the city's SCADA system, ultimate, or not SCADA, but into the oversight management, the integration within the wastewater plant. Talk about what's been going on, yeah, the connection to the SCADA system, why it's important to do this and what we hope to accomplish versus how is it?
The bigger issue that we have, or the concern we have right now, is all nine of these lift stations have no communication back to the plant. It's relied upon the neighborhood, somebody driving by, police department, whoever, to see either a red light and/or a horn going off at the lift station, which means something's failed, the pumps failed, the motors failed, it can't keep up, whatever the situation is. Our concern is, and it hasn't happened to this point, which is a great thing, but our concern is, if that link or that communication being a neighbor, being somebody driving by, doesn't get relayed or called to the answering service, which then calls out a wastewater employee, we could potentially cause a lot of backup in a number of basements. By connecting it to the SCADA system, at that point, you will have set alarms, you'll have set levels. The minute that level gets a little too high because of something that failed or a huge flow into the lift station, the SCADA system sends out an alarm to whoever's on call, and the communication should be a lot quicker, or the response should be a lot quicker. The other benefit of having this communication, that's the big one, the other benefit is, is just monitoring the lift stations. You'll be able to know when things started, stop, you'll be able to change settings, you'll be able to know how many hours are on it. We hopefully will get to the point where we won't have to go and check them quite as often, because right now, our concern is if we don't monitor them on a regular basis, being twice a week, we just do it. It's kind of a safety net for us. With the SCADA system, you wouldn't have to do that. You would still go and check them, but you wouldn't do it twice a week. So, there will be some cost savings as far as hours spent going to them. The bigger concern is monitoring them and just knowing what's going on and getting that alarm in a timely manner to try and prevent trouble in the residents' homes.
So, the $162,000 in the budget, what about the $9,100? Is that going to happen this year?
Some of it will happen this year, some will happen next year, just because of the timing year, and we just had a lot of slow responses from different companies. So that 162 will carry over. That will be part of the 162. This plan, actually, we should come in well below that 162 with this plan. The 162 included running a separate fiber optic line from the city's network to that one lift station, and we just didn't think it was money well spent, not at this point. We know that someday, the city's network's going to get by these lift stations, so why would we run one line and just designate it for that and spend that money upfront where we know it's going to come around someday?
So, the $162,000 included running the fiber optic?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for, Glenn?
In your packet is a copy, in case you didn't notice, where we have the nine existing lift stations throughout the community. One you can't see quite well is behind the bus garage on County Road 37. There's actually two stars there that overlap a little bit, right in the middle of the page, kind of.
Behind the bus garage, we have what we call the main lift and then the bypass. That's the system, if you remember, when we replaced the force main going through the waterway up to the end school. That's what that system does with that pump, too. The bypass is put in there as our backup to the main, because the main, that main lift station takes 75% of this community. So the bypass is there in case something happens to that main lift. The bypass is also there, and it's still true today, but it's getting better because of all the infrastructure that we've changed and put new sewer lines in. But we still have, after heavy rains, and we have a lot of water coming there, and there's still times after a super-heavy rain, that that bypass kicks in and flows into that bypass. Main lift can't keep up.
Okay?
So that's the two lift stations. That's why they're so close.
Any other questions? Not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the $9,100 for the bringing the fiber optics to the stations and the $600 a year per station contract with Bevcom. Second. Motion by Sean Ryan, seconded by Dave Brusick. If there is any other further comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Are you on the next one, too?
I am. If you remember, some time ago, we joined an organization called METCERB, which is the Minnesota Environmental Science and Economic Review Board. METCERB works for a number of communities, such as New Prague, and they're kind of our watchdog to see what's going on in the pollution control agency and the EPA and things like that, and just kind of make sure that it's good for everybody. It's good for nature, and it's good for the cities that are, you know, contributing to sending clean discharge water into the streams and lakes and rivers and things like that. There's a new rule that the EPA and the pollution control is trying to, things that we need to have in place, and it's the sulfate water quality rule. Sulfate affects wild rice quite a bit, and they're trying to change the rule to make it very strict for wastewater plants that are dumping into the stream. In our situation, we dump into Phillips Creek, which is just a little bit behind the bus garage there. That's where our discharge is. That eventually goes to Sand Creek, which eventually ends up into the Minnesota River, and there's a map attached, which surprised me when I saw this, but the three lakes that they're saying we could cause a problem to, us being one of the wastewater plants or the contributors to that whole system, are right at the intersection of 101 and 169. Blue Lake, Fisher Lake, and Rice Lake. That's almost 60 miles away. If I remember correctly, it was like 56 miles away, something like that. METCERB is not against looking at the rule and saying that, you know, probably it's got to be tightened up a little bit, probably we should do a better job with the standard. They're not agreeing with the process that the pollution control is taking to figure this out, and, and just to say, we need stricter rules so all you communities that are contributing to this problem or this area need to invest a huge amount of dollars to change the treatment process. There's two ways to get rid of sulfates in water. One is lime softening, the other is reverse osmosis. There's a lot of different estimates out there, what it could cost. I mean, I've seen everywhere, and I got it in the memo, that it could be $10 to $75 million to upgrade plants to deal with sulfates. It's an unbelievable amount of money, and as I said, METCERB is basically just saying, we don't disagree that we have to monitor, we have to watch it, but they just don't agree with the process they're using to figure out what the new rule per wastewater plant would be. So, in the memo, attached to the memo, is a letter that they sent out, and they said that we can tweak it if we want, but here's a draft letter that they're recommending that the mayor signs and sends to the Office of Administrative Hearings. So basically, all that does is, it lets us voice our opinion. Do we agree or disagree, and why? So the recommendation here is to have the mayor sign this letter, and we send it off to the Office of Administrative Hearings. Again, we never want to come off that we don't think it's a good idea that we, you know, we send really quality water out to stream. By the time it gets way over there, it's mixed quite a bit, and it's just the process they're using to figure out what the standard should be, is they're actually looking at where your discharge is, and they're not taking into consideration that's mixing with a lot of other water. And that's kind of the biggest discussion here.
Isn't farm runoff, don't they have a sulfate?
They do. They do, but we have a plant, so, we're, you know.
But that's what you're saying, you know?
Well, there's a lot of other contributors.
Heading down to the stream.
Yeah, there's a lot of other contributors, and that's METCERB's argument also, is we should be looking at all these contributors and educating people along the way. And yes, we have to be a player in this, but there's also a lot of people that need to get on board, and we need to help them understand why this is not a good way, good practice, or how do you change that practice? So there's a lot of variables in here that they feel are to be looked at that should be looked at.
First of all, Mayor, I'd just echo what Mike said, but indicate, number one, I think as a city, it's our responsibility to ensure that we're as environmentally sensitive as we can, as we can be, and so we're not opposed to the rules and regulations that are developed by MPCA. I think it's spelled out in the third paragraph of the letter that Glenn has provided to you, is that they're looking at the 10-milligram-per-liter standard, and that maybe that needs to be updated, but there's a concern that in the new sulfate rule that's being propagated by MPCA, is that it's built on a series of overly conservative assumptions and some incomplete analyses that are resulting in a standard that's more restrictive than may be necessary. And so there's time for this to play out, but they're moving fairly quickly in the rulemaking process in trying to, what they acknowledge in here is, unreasonable to adopt a rule that goes beyond what METCERB protects wild rice. So, that's what I want to say, is that we're not wanting to improperly provide improvements into the streams and that. The question is, is it what standard, and how do they go about that process? And so, if you've taken the time to read the letter, you can see that it's not that METCERB has been educated, that METCERB works quite closely with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities in addressing these kind of rules and regulations in Greater Minnesota, which is kind of why we took them almost a year ago.
Any other questions for Glenn? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve sending this letter with the signature of the mayor.
I'll second.
Seconded by Maggie Bass. Any other comments?
You wrote a good letter, Mayor.
I always.
Your buddy Hawk must have helped you.
I always do. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Ken, are you going to handle this next one? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda tonight is a draft policy for the installation, potentially of impaired child at play zone signage, and that can be anywhere from blind child to child, even autistic children's signs, or even something that's occurring these days. But to give the council a little background on exactly how we arrived at bringing this to you tonight, over the past eight years, we've had a few inquiries about installing these different types of signs. Most notably was back in 2009, where staff had actually denied a request. We didn't obviously have a policy at that point, and for a blind child area signed on Lexington Avenue North, the requesting resident ended up putting up their own signs, and we noted that they did not meet our adopted Minnesota Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Vices Manual. It's about an orange thick book from Minda, essentially that we use for when signage is appropriate to be installed. So we ended up taking the signs down, and that caused basically an appeal from that particular case to come back to the city council in October of '09, where the council approved the signs to be reinstalled at that time, and requested staff to look into a formal procedure for future requests. Obviously, that's about eight years ago now, over eight years ago, and we really hadn't had any other requests until recently, here in 2017. We had somebody inquire about another similar sign that did not make a formal request, and that's where we got back to putting together a policy. Glenn and I had worked with Andrew Baker's staff out of Scott Riggs's office to come up with a policy that would generally apply anytime these requests would come up in the future. So, that is what you see attached to the memo on the back. So it is basically the one-page policy itself. It's not very lengthy. It has a few things of note in there. That city does not condone the use of such signs in the right of way. We've talked about this in the past with the council, but there's been numerous studies that have been done that show that this does not provide any additional safety for the children. The best advice we give is to simply try to teach children not to play out in the road or near the road. However, there's people that do feel this provides them peace of mind, whether that's real or not is another topic, but we don't condone these, but that they would be allowed to have them installed, essentially should they pay for the signs, and should they provide some documentation, such as a physician statement that there is an impairment for the child, it has to be under the age of 18, and that we're provided that at the time they make application. One of the other topics that's included in the policy would be an annual recertification process. So we don't have a sign installed. Resident moves out, the child becomes over the age of 18 or moves out of the home, whatever it might be, that basically, May 31st of each year, any applicant that had been approved and had the signage installed, they have to recertify that basically by submitting via regular mail or email, a new form. Don't have to pay any additional fees, just to confirm that, yes, they still would like that signage to remain in place. One question that I'm sure the council probably had, is what is the cost of installing basically a single sign on a post? Glenn had done some research on that. It's about $150 for one post, and then a sign on each side of it, so it's visible from traffic on both ways of the road. Any numbers that he said policy similar to this? Really, like I said, not much to the policy itself, but you also see an actual application form in here for your review, and then some legal information, such as kind of a legal statement that they hold the city harmless in the event that a child is injured, even with the sign in place. And then finally, the tenet and warning that some of the information would become public upon request if somebody wanted to make that request. So that was some information added to the city attorney's office. But, yeah, in a nutshell, it really comes down to, we don't condone these, but understand there's people that may want them and may give them some peace of mind, but they would have to pay for it. So that's what we are bringing forth to you for a draft discussion here this evening. I don't think I have anything yet. Glenn, do you have anything more to add to that?
Nope, you've covered it.
Took us a long time to work on this, talked days, all eight years. We had actually been back to it until, I don't know, sometime this summer, and finally got this to this point to bring to you here tonight.
Ken, it sounds like there aren't that many people requesting these signs.
No, we had not had one from 2009 until this past summer. But we still feel we probably should have a policy to address when we do get the request, because again, we're kind of fumbling around, like, well, we really don't have an application to give you when the last one came out. So it's kind of like, okay, we need to actually get a process in place so they can formally make that request, understand that they would have to pay for it in that direction you'd want to go.
No. I think this whole thing is fine, except in view of the fact that these are families that have impaired children somehow, I would waive the $150 fee. I would just let, have the city foot the bill. That's not much.
In the conversation, the reason that it's entered, that is, that's technically a private situation, and it's really not a public sign in accident capacity, but in the conversation with the attorney, that's why we've got the price identified, because it is of primary benefit to one particular property owner for whatever reasons. Obviously, we have the right to do that, but that's the reason it's in the way, is needed.
Okay. I understand that. My rationale was that this family already has a lot of more fees or issues, and I would say that if you want to charge something for applying, 10, 15 bucks, fine, but I don't see why they should be charged.
The other side of it, from a liability standpoint, as Ken indicated, is that, you know, you want to be careful that this sign is installed by the public and paid for by the public, and if something happens because the young child or person happened to be out there, and that somebody didn't either see the sign or it didn't protect, is that there's some exposure there that you take on by installing what is perceived as a public sign, but is really a private sign benefiting that property owner. It's an intent to help bring awareness to that specific location, but in there, as Ken alluded to, the reason that historically, that there was some reluctance to put those kind of signs up, is that it doesn't, you know, it doesn't guarantee anything by installing that sign. And doing that, by us doing that, and at our cost, you know, it brings us into the mix if and should an accident happen, is, well, you guys put up the sign, and you know, you should have been able to guarantee that. There is no guarantee with this. It's just a simple identification and an awareness, maybe more so than not having the sign. So, there was a number of debate about even trying to bring a policy to do this in light of the perceived expectation. Same thing, when you have some of the people put up those small little turtle signs with a little flag on them, you know, really those, they have no right or authority to be installing those or putting those out the end of their driveway, out into the parking area, when you have children that play out in your driveway to do that. Technically, that's not appropriate.
So what color are these? Are these blue and white signs, or?
They would be yellow, black on yellow.
Okay.
Yeah, no different than what you've probably seen in the past, the slow children at play or children at play signs, things like that. It's a warning sign, which would be black lettering on yellow backing.
Okay.
My question is, I'm for the policy. I think we need the policy, but the, my question is the physician statement and it becoming public information on a minor child. on a minor child with the HIPAA regulations? Is there another way we can do that?
Yeah, that's one of the things the city attorney brought up. Our concern internally was errant requests, I guess, that didn't have a factual.
Could we just have a physician's signature and not have information attached to it?
Well, it's not something we're going to necessarily hand out. I think Ken identified is that if for any reason something would be inadvertently released, I think that's what you said.
What are we talking about?
No.
It's going to be on a sign on the road anyways. They're already admitting to the fact that there's a situation, whether it was a deaf child or a blind child or whatever.
But the piece that Amy is asking for is that typically on any, any application or information that we as a city have is that short of protecting under the Minnesota Data Practices Act, there's certain information that's not to be released, should not be released. Typically, this would be a medical piece that we would have close at the end of the application, but separated, in all likelihood, if we had a medical opinion. But you're right, the very issue you're describing is that it's just the certification for the medical provider that that child is, is in fact, one of those that would make that person eligible for the signage.
What happens if we didn't have the doctor's signature though? So, I mean, I can't see somebody just making up a request that.
You wouldn't hope anybody would, never know. We did talk about that, that do we really need that? And we kicked that around internally. We thought, yeah, you know, what are the likelihood that they're going to do that? Probably pretty darn low. I don't know. I mean, you could go either way with it.
Yeah. It was, yeah. We batted it around for quite a while.
So for example, like a handicap application on a vehicle that just takes a doctor's signature, they don't have to explain it?
Okay, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
They have an actual form they fill out for the state that goes to the state. So they fill out what the disability and the information on there is that the state receives. So that's for the state.
For a handicap sign, you mean?
A stick. Yeah.
I'm for the policy, but I also share your concern about any release of medical information and if there's a way to protect that.
Maybe just the signature then?
I think that would suffice instead of having description of what the actual impairment is.
But then how we know to make the sign?
Is it just a generic sign?
No, specific to.
It's got to be blind or.
Yeah.
I misunderstood that. I just thought it was a generic impaired child at play.
No, I'm sorry. The policy is generically term that.
Okay.
You could have that document, whatever form that is for the doctor to sign, you could have that reviewed by office staff. And on that application check, it was reviewed, sign and date that as proof that they provided it. We didn't keep any of it though.
I do like, because I like that idea of not keeping it because then we don't have to maintain that data.
Right.
I'd be in favor of that.
It's a good working room.
Well, they provide it, but you get it back to them then, tells it's reviewed.
And stat initial that they viewed it and.
But we're still talking that we're going to have a sign that says, you know, blind child or.
Specific to the impairment.
Right.
Right.
This process, as we deal with this data relative to any other private or protected data is the same thing, whether it's employees, whether it's utility, common information or other things. We do that routinely as part of our job.
And what I understand that, but I'm saying for, I don't want the city to take the liability of someone else's health records for a resident.
We take it for employees.
But that's an employee. Employees have signed that, they know that. A resident may not. I would just like to protect the city that way.
Okay. You know, I guess, you know, I guess what Jim suggested, you know, that seems to work with the review.
Staff to review.
Review and sign.
Physician's statement checkbox, staff reviewed.
And then return it back to them so that we don't hold any documents. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the policy with the change.
You don't have to take action unless you want to. We just want to know this is a draft.
Oh, okay.
So if you want us to bring it back in file form, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
If you want to point that out. You can adopt it. I just want to.
Let's adopt it with their, I'll make a motion to adopt it with that Amy's or that Jim suggested on Amy and Maggie's recommendation.
I got a motion.
Second.
Second by Amy Jurk, a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Amy Jurk. To any other comments? And we're going to adopt the policy with the recommendation that the staff will review the information, but not keep any of the medical records that pertain to it, so.
Review the physicians.
Yep, review the physician's statement and just checkbox that they can review them and that, so. Okay. If there's no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Excellent agenda. At our last budget workshop, we kind of left the room that night with the thing that if you had any questions or issues or changes or any more discussion on the preliminary budget that we could maybe get answers to today and kind of finalize it before we get ready for the public hearing. It's what, the fourth, Mike? December 4th, the public hearing?
Yes. With the adoption on the 18.
Correct. Okay. Mike, you had something you mentioned to me, so.
Well, we have the materials in front of you that kind of show to start with the process. Remember, this is on the tax levy piece. I'm not sure what other pieces the council wants to touch on, but just on the update on property tax levy is, item A is where we were at in the revised book as far as the reduction of the original levy being reduced from the original levy of $4,166,210, which meant the levy was up 169,000 or about 4.2%. In the budget revisions that we brought to the council on October 9th, we had reduced that levy down to about an increase of 92,000 or 2.3% with the levy at $4,089,000. And taking a look at that again, dependent upon the council discussions, I think it was mayor, you were one that had a suggestion or a question about whether if we took the Armory project and took that as a capital improvement item out of the budget for 2018 and designated when you review the year-end fund balance and the policy allocations, assuming we have, which we believe we will, excess revenues or expenses, that we could take part of that and just allocate that towards the demolition of that total project, which is estimated at about $66,000. That certainly can be done from a funding standpoint, but we still have to have it in as an expense somewhere. So if you do that, then technically what we'd end up doing would, we would use fund balance to cover that in next year if you were wanting to reduce the levy in conjunction with that. But we still have to include it as an expense if we want to do it, or we leave it out and you bring it back later on. But I think Glenn had it in there. It's just your question of the timing and the priority or it's simple allocation. We defended have to bring it back if you want to bring it out of fund balance. So that could be done, which would allow us to reduce that levy even further if that was your choice. My review that night, there wasn't, we didn't go into any further discussion. I think we went through and we reviewed in our three workshops, all of the most notable changes occurring in 2018 from the technology side or the website enhancement. You had the Armory demolition of the government building. I think Glenn also had some carpeting and rework throughout the building and the stairs in there. We have the fiber connection to the outdoor pool, which could also be technically eliminated out there if you want. Slight increase of the part-time help in parks. Park Board had special projects. I think the biggest one was the, at the skate park that, that any half pipe and contingency, we have that at $15,000. So through some combination there, we could consider the Armory demolition. And the proposal that was going to recommend that night is that we take a look at further review of our technology and we're engaging a company called Computer Integration Technologies located at Woodbury, doing an overall review and assessment, just an investigation piece as to our system that parent provider will live. It's, they're not capable of probably doing as much if not more than one of the gentleman is, I believe, is all small business stuff. And the gentleman that had been doing most of the work, who also did all the computer technology for the hospital or the sewer, has cut back to just ours. So we took a look at some of the preliminary things that might need to get done. If you remember, we had discussion, I think it was a budget workshop number two, when we reviewed the technology budget, that there's probably more there that we need to do. And so taking a look at that, part of me says that we need to be summed that up in regards to what it might take to undertake that review and the assessment and implement some of the recommendations that are likely to come forward. Or if not, we wait till that review is done, come back and take it out of the mayor council contingency account. And so if you were going to take out the demolition of the Armory and fund that out of the fund balance piece, then I would certainly recommend using some part of that to apply towards the technology thing. Or if you wanted to wait, you could do it and we could take it out of the mayor council contingency. But that was really the only last item I had in the overall general fund budget or the other ones that we went through over the three workshops.
And I think right now, so the technology, you want page editing?
Sure, you know, second.
Page eight?
Page eight.
So. So what you're saying is right now we have what, 10,000?
But that was, if you remember, that was for the, taking a look at the website enhancement and then down below, we've got 20,000 on preliminary capital overlay.
So you want to increase the capital overlay?
I would probably put it there, but it may be part of it could go up under. I mean, part of it may go to professional services. It just depends on what they come back with, that overall recommendation. It may not be all capital overlay. It could be other security software or other things that we need to do that we're not currently doing. So it could be a mixture of items, both software and hardware. But I thought at least we do it as an allocation and before we would expend any of those dollars, we'd come back to the council with the overall assessment and the plan of what might need to be done in that area.
So what are you looking for, the increase?
About 25,000.
Okay. Now, right now in the pool, we have so much in the outdoor pool and then we have some for the indoor pool. We're going to, I understand we're going to leave it and make a decision on the outdoor pool, but then we would have additional funds to cover.
Indoor.
Indoor if we needed. Do we feel we have enough in that? There was no cap on that, was there, on the 50%?
No.
And then you also have money in the mayor council contingency.
How much is in that contingency?
Fifty.
When are you supposed to get the assessment done?
We are looking at doing the scheduling, the, if it works for all parties next Monday to come up to start and take a look at it and that whether one day is sufficient, I don't know, but it's all 5000, so it's a relatively minor piece. But it would attempt to identify both short-term and long-term strategic improvements and things that we need to do to deal with all facets of it. And so I don't have a final answer to tell you tonight just exactly what that would be. You know, you can choose not to put anything in there and then if I come to you with it after it's all done after the first year, then I'd have to look at going to the mayor council contingency to try and cover it. So there's a way that you can with a mere suggestion of the last meeting about reducing and taking out the 66,000 or using some part of that to cover this piece and still lowering the levy, levy a little bit more if you wanted.
What if, one of the options is if we leave in the Armory and if we need to, because we won't get that done towards the end of the year anyways, and see how the computer and the pool come out, so.
You could certainly do that.
We don't cut ourselves, expend too much of the general fund.
No, but we have, as you take a look at that, and that ultimately our preparedness is what's in our fund balance and that we all, you know, we have a fallback provision that our capability there and we have sufficient reserves there that there's no major emergency or anything that's going to occur that we don't have the abilities to cover. So from that standpoint, you've got things that are designated and allocated within the fund balance of the council. Should we ever have an emergency situation or something arise that we hadn't totally planned, you have abilities to un-designate the use of some of those things and to reallocate that if there was something major there. We've done this budgeting now for 10 years since I've been here and we've never not had enough in the mayor council contingency to cover any of that that's occurred in the course of any budgetary year.
So are you going to increase the?
No, what you're saying is leave it.
Just with the Armory, so if we need more for the pool or we can't get the Armory done and we need to shift those funds, we have those funds to shift.
Or, or if you did, if you did use it for that, we needed something we can allocate to the computer, the technology side or do the, you'd part to the technology, part to deal with the indoor pool if it was necessary. You've got some decision-making on the use of that.
Hopefully, we can all work out fine and get the Armory done too, but.
Because we have an additional.
You've got 50,000.
But don't we have an additional like 9,000 or 18,000 in the fiber optics?
8400 in the swimming pool budget.
And don't we have another piece for the base parks or for the baseball field too?
Yes, and parks. That's for Glenn. Bruce, Bruce did run a.
He ran the.
He ran conduit. So there would be some of that that we would have to use to help pay for the extension of that. He was running that for the water plant. And so he took it onto the road. So we went underneath to get to the baseball side. It's not going anywhere at this point, but at least it's there and they did it as part of bringing it all way up so they didn't have to do that later, but they ran it under the road. And I think they got it over on the golf course site so that at some point later on, they can pick up those runs and deal with that.
Okay.
But that's there as well.
Okay. Any other comments or things that you feel like?
Remember, I think there was no increases in water, no increases in wastewater, no rate increases in stormwater. And I think all that was there from the last session was I think a 3% on the kilowatt that Bruce spoke of in the preparation of those rates. No change in the base rates.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I feel comfortable with the 2.3?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
The next step would be public hearing preparation. So you still have time, but for any reason you wanted to change it, that ultimately, that's what we would prepare documents around for the general fund and debt service, anything associated with the levy. And then we would take that for the public hearing and then your formal adoption would be on December 18th. So you still have a couple of meetings to go through for any reason. And if you had second thoughts, you wouldn't want to talk about anything further.
Okay. So do you, do you need a motion or anything in this?
Oh, I don't need any action.
Okay.
It is a world left, and just wanted to acknowledge, because I think truth and taxation notices came out this week, and I think both on the Lazura County and Scott County side. And so when you take a look at what we have in the packet here, is we're showing the 2.3 now, which was originally a 4.23. So whatever anybody saw on the city side will be coming down from what was on that statement.
All right. So the only problem with those truth and taxation deals is your value changes, you really don't.
There's, there's a picture where you, when you take a look at it.
Your value changes and you're going, because I looked at my city when I go, well, that's higher than 4.23%, and I looked at the value up on top, said, oh, there we go.
And as I told somebody today in a discussion, that, you know, if you wanted to take a look at it, and you took a look at value from 17 to 18, to see what that, what the change in the levies were, you can do that, because it ends up typically in a combination, is you have to look at what's happening on the spending side that's changing the individual situation, but you need to separate that and figure out how much of that is really related to the increase in the value change.
If there's no other discussion, we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the one that we had at 5-5, which is the bank change documents due to the ownership change. That will be happening December 1st from the state bank to the First Bank Trust.
I'll tell you this, the first two documents have been reviewed by the attorney's office, and they're okay with them. If that tells you anything, unless you'd like to go page by page.
Oh, I just love bank documents. I'm on all of that.
The securities custodial agreement's a little bit different, because it's going to end up being an agreement between the city, the First Bank and Trust, and apparently they brought in the Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines, who's going to be the custodian of pledged securities in this transaction, that apparently have to be with the bank today, and following the review by the city attorney's office, that this, this will be a much simpler arrangement going forward, it sounds like, for this bank, that they'll have a number of pledged securities in larger dollar amounts than all of the individual ones that have just currently been, have been pledged to back of our securities that Patty is overseeing. So the securities custodial agreement was previously reviewed. The First Bank and Trust, the ACH agreement, that came in on Thursday, was out on Friday, had it reviewed by the city attorney's office, and we did make, they made the change here. This is the revised agreement, it's in about 5 o'clock tonight. They did that the attorneys recommended in section 43 on page 11, which was really the only change, other than the date change in the agreement, they had November 6th, and we've got it now tonight, November 20th. But under the governing law, the venue and jurisdiction is that this agreement shall be construed in accordance with and governed by the laws of the state of Minnesota without regard to its choice of law provisions, and basically the venue, that should there be any disagreement, consent agreed to the exclusive jurisdiction and venue of the state and federal court located within the sewer county that they had, Brooklyn, South Dakota. So if there was a venue issue, we didn't want to have to go argue our case over in South Dakota, and the attorney's recommended a main appropriate change late this afternoon in the agreement. So that one was taken care of, otherwise I really don't have much else for you, other than it's fairly significant processes as far as, like we did it to the ACH, what we already have with the state bank. But the last one is one that I found that was attached with the previous agreement that I have not specifically spoken to the attorney's office about, and would like your approval of, should we decide to go through, I'm not certain that it is or isn't necessary, but just haven't had time to review this with both either Patty or the attorney's office. But because these are, they're wanting these to be in place before the merger occurs, is I'd like to get your authority or approval of the security procedure waiver, but I'm not certain at this point that we will need it or not. But I don't want to not have you giving, you know, your blessing on it, because I have to have it executed by both the mayor and myself. If we do this, I just need to make sure between staff and attorneys, just exactly what's occurring in this process. I don't have that as of right now. But if you would consider the approval and whether you want to do it in individual motions or one sweeping motion to approve these documents.
I think we can approve them as one sweeping motion. It makes sense to me.
You know, I, I don't like bringing these to you late in the evening, I don't know if, but as I said, the one just came Thursday, the other one Patty had reviewed and approved, it was sitting on her desk. They needed counsel, probably, but they didn't make it to the packet process, and then the security one was with the documents, and had the chance to talk about that and to check with staff, just as to whether this waiver is really needed or not, but would like your blessing to have it approved if I find that it's necessary.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the 5.5 agenda items, which is reattached.
Okay. I got a motion by Amy Jurick, second by Sean Ryan. Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Next is the consent agenda. Well, Mike, you had a question.
I'd like to hold, if you don't mind, hold off item C for further discussion, if you're okay with that.
Yep. Okay.
Again, after this one was prepared, I could tell you, you've done more work on this one than the value of what the permit is, so I'll just tell you that at the outset. Because of a number of questions and clarifications, and what they wanted to do with the event, and whether they were legal or not, we ended up having to put a lot of things together, even though this was technically almost a repeat. So once you read it there, everything is generally in order, but further discussion between the police department and the attorneys that I had met with last Friday, or last Thursday evening, comparing this memo, is that we've got a couple of things that we want to point out. In my memo, I'm already telling you that the area that's outlined in area, which would be the area that would allow the alcoholic beverages to be consumed in, is an expanded area from last year's event, for those of you that happened to stop by and take a look at it. And the one larger room that was built to the south, kind of on the Westerly Two of the way that you're looking at this, that whole area is okay, meets all the code requirements. The area that I have hatched in yellow at this point still does not meet all of the ADA compliance regulations, and so with any approval is that this area would have to meet the conditions and review included by the building official before we can technically open up that area to be used for as part of the event. It's our belief that progress has been made, and it's hopeful that it can be done, because I have to send these same materials to the state tomorrow in order to get their license, so I have to be pretty confident that what you review and approve and conditions are able to be met as we send this up. The other clarification to add with it, even though it's not written, is to ensure that the, the license, the temporary, the two-day license that we're approving, covers the time period as stated in the letter request, that would run from 12 o'clock till 8:00 PM on Friday, December 8th, and from 9:00 AM till 4:00 PM on Saturday, December 9th. Item B would be no tastings are to occur during the event. We have review and discussion with, not only the city attorney, but one of the associates, trying to take a look at it. They wanted to hold a couple of beer tastings as part of their license, and the conclusion that was reached by the attorneys ultimately is that that cannot occur under this temporary license, under the statutes. And then the final piece was what I'd already recommended, is that the approval of the area in yellow that's cross-hatched requires approval by the city building official in order for that space to be used. Otherwise, everything else is in order, the application, the insurance. It is, as you take a look at, on the area Historical Society, in conjunction with Bill Bree, and I'm probably butchering that, but that partnership is three, three couples that were involved in this event last year. Couple of them are doing it this year in conjunction with the Historical Society again, although it's not on the same night as Santa Claus comes to town, it'll be the following weekend.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be a scandal on that, not that same night.
You mean the late?
Yeah, the late was on, right, that's when they did that lashing, that's the weekend behind that.
Okay.
So those are just the additional items that I would ask to be included in your approval of that one, sort of simply, that it's approved with those conditions.
And they're aware of, of the tasty and American and everything that you talked about, so, okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just curious, why isn't that tasting allowed?
Jim, you want to try to take a shot at that?
Just by statute, the beer tasting and wine tasting are set up as a fundraiser. Because they have this temporary license and are selling by the glass, they can't do a tasting at the same time.
Oh, one or the other?
Yep. Well, even to the degree that you guys would authorize what that temporary license is You could authorize, if they, if they chose to do the tasting in booths in 210, and somebody else had the temporary license, and two of them were offered, and specifically we're saying, no, this is two separate entities here, and it's a separate event, then they could do that in conjunction. With that being said, then we would look at, well, then you can't be walking into both of them from the same area then, though they'd have to have a separate entrance or something. But yeah, by statute, they cannot do it.
Thanks, Jim.
I spent 45 minutes on the phone with the two attorneys arguing the merits and the abilities to do this or to not do this, and I said, so what's the conclusion? They said, this is a new one for us, that we haven't had that kind of inquiry, and that was the resolution that they came to. They were also looking at wanting to possibly have tobacco products sold there, and that would have required additional licensing, and by the time we figured out what would have to go on with that versus just the normal tobacco paraphernalia versus tobacco itself, that would require a license which, under the city's ordinance, is not prorated, is $200, and they've had to provide that to them about a half a day in order to be able to do this. So a lot of issues and questions that came up in the research that wasn't the same as what we did last year, nothing about time that I think we have invested, that, like I said, is more than what we receive, and I have an offerment already, but we have answers.
Okay. Any other questions on that item or anything else in the consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second by Dave Brusich. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Clarification, that was with the conditions on that license.
Correct. Yes. Okay. Now the phone one, miscellaneous. Patrick, you got anything?
Just let everybody have a happy day.
Okay, thank you. Noah, you have anything to mention? Okay, Mitch, you're good. Jim?
I haven't got anything.
Glenn?
Just, if you haven't seen, the backstop poles are in at the baseball field. The next step is to start warming up to board the knee wall, hopefully Mother Nature continues to cooperate with us and that keeps going.
Now, the footage for the light poles in already?
Say that, I'm sorry, what?
The footage for the light poles, the two.
The footage, oh yeah.
Yeah.
Been in for a while already.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So, that's all I got.
So what's, what's left to do on that for this winter, before the winter ends, before the winter starts?
We'd like to see quite a bit more happening there. Mother Nature's going to dictate that. We had a meeting with the contractor about a week and a half ago, and we talked about what needs to happen today, because there's no frost in the ground, and what you can do after there's frost in the ground. For example, get your poles in, you can always put the fencing up when there's frost in the ground, once the poles are off, you have things like that. So that has to happen, the flatwork or the concrete for the patio or the concession area has to happen. It could, it'd be pretty unbelievable, but Mother Nature can do it, it's through us.
We didn't see it today, but on Friday, we had the engineer do an inspection of the site to determine what is done, what's not done. Friday was technically substantial completion, so we've had a conversation with the city attorney's office and the engineer, and we'll take a look at their report and determine the next steps and how we can move this along.
Okay. Any other questions for Glenn?
No.
Okay. Ken?
Just a note, we issued the demo permit for Yount Foods Building today, so you probably saw that mostly done, so a couple of days of demo, and then there'll be a couple more weeks of hauling out the site, but still, I have a construction date, QuickTrip. I just want to verify for everybody watching at home, yes, QuickTrip is still planning to build. There's still people commenting out there that they don't think that's going to happen, but they will, so.
Okay. Mike?
Just a quick update, I believe it's tomorrow, the senior, the affordable senior housing project, Mr. Mark Applebaum and his crew are supposed to close on their loans with the bank filing tomorrow, and he's telling me we should expect to see construction equipment on the site after Thanksgiving. So that project hopefully will be up and getting started. Ken and Chad still have to, they've got a building permit sitting there, ready to go hopefully, and they're closing tomorrow, that allows them to execute the construction contracts and get moving forward.
I think I saw a surveyor out there last week. Okay. Anything else, Mike?
No, Glenn and I are in Mankato tomorrow with another technical meeting with the Mid Side staff on the 2020 project, that's our once a month, every other month meeting that we have, so we'll be in Mankato in a minute.
Okay, good. Barb, you have anything? Oh, Mike, you're not done yet?
I was just going to say that, I guess, probably just condolences to our finance director, Patty Solheim, her husband passed away this weekend, his funeral was on Wednesday, and so Patty's been dealing with some very challenging things here in recent weeks, so just wanted to extend our condolences and sympathies, but.
Yeah, well noted. Barb, anything?
I do not.
Okay. Maggie?
No, sir.
Amy?
I just, I have a question, I don't expect an answer, but just to research, I had a resident ask me about noise ordinances for the trains, like in the morning when they're running their engines.
They are exempt from noise ordinances by federal law, essentially?
I said it's a federal regulation, but I just thought I'd just check. Okay, so I'll.
You want a copy of that or reference to pointing in that direction or?
Yeah, you could send it.
Yeah, I could send it to you.
I'll mail it to them then. Thank you.
Any else? Sean?
No.
David?
No.
The only thing I have is I need evaluations for Mike. You're supposed to have him to be the 15th, obviously. Maggie gave me hers today, so if you could get those in, because I'd like to do that, the last meeting in December, rather than procrastinating like we did last year, and we were into February, but if you could just get me those, that'd be great. Okay. Mike, do we need to adjourn and then go into closed session, or?
Yes, we need to adjourn this meeting, and then you can open up the special meeting after that, after we've cleared up.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second by Sean Ryan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, thank you, everyone.